Hello, we are live. Duvit here with my co-host of Week in Review, Jennifer Church of Entropy. And I haven't done too many streams on my channel recently, but I have been doing regular Week in Review for a few years now on Jennifer's channel on Sundays. And we've been advancing a lot of research. I had put out streams months ago on the multiple truth hypothesis and most recently just some chess streams. But I wanted to get back into the research and I thought we'd do a public study session on a topic that keeps on coming up. And also to, you know, to advance the theories that in reality, you know, something that would be published or more for academia is going to be mostly equations. And it's going to have a lot of math and complicated things, although it's understandable on intuitive level. So today we're going to be doing somewhat of an arithmetic tutorial on starting with very basic stuff that even, you know, young kids might understand the unit circle and the sphere up to like calculus three stuff that would be like spherical coordinates, triple integrals in just how the sphere is understood and designed. And then also going to mention some more complicated ideas that hopefully we'll be talking about in the future, like the Riemann sphere and conformal mapping or spherical projections that will be more useful for stuff in the future that we're going to be talking about. And you know, me and Jennifer have been doing a lot of stuff more debate, I guess, and esoteric. And talking a lot about dualism and kind of the dichotomy of the spiritual and material realm. And so we mentioned a lot, the platonic solids and various concepts of the ancients. And a lot of people don't realize that what we learn in math class, that this is actually what the people who came up with these theories themselves said. So it's not like, you know, Duvit and Jennifer are mystics and believe in spiritual stuff. I mean, we do. But I'm going to try to express what the people like Euler, Leibniz, who came up with these theories actually said. And this kind of concept of dualism of a spiritual and material realm could be somewhat understood as the connection between the algebra and geometry. Meaning to say that you have shapes that, you know, we're all familiar with like the circle and sphere. And then we have equations in algebraic form that define these shapes. And to try to understand in a more complicated way. So we're not going to be talking too much about spirituality. It's going to be basically straightforward math. And then hopefully maybe this will kick off Jennifer on her own channel, possibly a series of streams that would, you know, be more educational. And, you know, general trying to get people are interested in understanding these ideas up to speed on mathematics. But obviously, you know, people who want to know mathematics have to do the work to go through it. You can take courses, enroll in school, take online courses. But we just for our own, you know, benefit review and to have these ideas quickly on our head for use. And, you know, as a public, a public, you know, benefit is a good deed just to put some educational material out there. So why don't I let Jennifer say any introductory remarks? And then I'll say quickly, a little bit of itinerary of what we hope will cover and then we'll jump right in.
Hello. Thanks for having me. Looking forward to this educational stream. And I don't really have anything to say right now, but I will be ready to start once you've done your introduction.
Okay. The, yeah, so I plan on covering, you know, we're going to start with just what is a circle, the unit circle? And the basics of trigonometry, like, like, you know, what is a circle? What are the trigonometric functions? And then we'll look at the sphere. And then we're going to look at how to define points on a sphere within trigonomical functions. And, you know, this will be the connection between, as I said, algebra and geometry, which I'm kind of giving as a parallel to the spiritual to a material realm. And, and we're also going to cover some more advanced things like how to derive the polar in spherical coordinates. And hopefully actually, you know, partly recruited Jennifer to help me with the math. So, you know, I think she prepared and we're going to show, you know, if people aren't familiar, the, you know, what's polar coordinates and spherical coordinates. And then we're not going to be doing a calculus tutorial, but maybe I have briefly prepared also how to derive the sphere from calculus in terms of the integral. And, and also if people are familiar with the famous Euler formula, you know, it's one of the most famous formulas, which is e to the i pi equals negative one. So I'm going to go over a proof of that. We're also going to be talking about just very basic parametric equation of a circle where you have x and y defined in terms of time. And these things are all going to be, you know, useful for stuff that we've already been talking about and are going to be talking about more in the future. Then I want to mention some much more complicated things that are going to be things that I'm studying now that were kind of the maximum of my university study that was beyond my time ability, but I've had some time to research. And Riemann sphere and mapping and projections, which are very interesting. But these things are, you know, advanced graduate school level mathematics, even beyond, you know, my understanding of math, you have to perform calculations. So with that, I'm going to do a screen share and Jennifer wants to say anything, feel free. And then we'll start with some very basics.
Are you done saying all you had to say about mysticism?
Yeah, I'm not going to be talking about mysticism. I just from, from my perspective, that algebra to geometry could be understood as algebra is the spiritual realm, geometry is the material realm.
It's funny because I would have put it, I would have said the opposite. But anyway, if I can just screen share for one little teeny tiny explanation that this like, people can't tell the difference between absolute and relative knowledge because most of what we have access to is relative like math, because it doesn't go outside of particularly constrained axiomatic variables. You really are in a relative domain. Like if you've ever done any type of proof, you get the sense of being in a relativized domain because it's like, oh, I better just start at the conclusion and work my way backwards. And it's like, wait a minute, there should be some absolute. Sorry, we're here some type of a, it's going to say crutch, but it's more of a thing that a boat drops out when they're going to sleep. Not a hook, but a, anyway, the thing you drop down is really heavy in a boat that holds the boat. Thank you. An anchor. It's an anchor. You need a metaphysical anchor to make everything make sense. And as you draw towards the anchor, which is at the top of the diagram, you're getting towards more absolute, non-dual knowledge. And that's why I tried to make a little distinction here that it's pretty easy to deal with relativized knowledge because that's what we have direct quote, you know? Yeah. Thanks Scott S. Cringe. Yeah. So we basically are at a point where we've sort of dissuaded ourselves the importance of metaphysics. So it's very easy to draw false equivalences between relativized knowledge and absolute knowledge. So point of learning calculus here isn't to say, well, the universe functions on basis calculus. Well, it's actually the opposite. It's to see why it doesn't. And how sometimes it actually makes sense to model the universe with something other than calculus. AKA it's only actually legit to model using calculus since under certain very specific circumstances. And that's where the universe matches your calculus precepts, right? Your axioms. So basically this is why, as you get to the more foundational attributes, knowledge, it's because sort of like, I don't want to see the walls glows in, but there's, it's harder. It's requires these, you know, drawn out. I don't want to say horrible conversations, but conversations that can very easily go in a horrible direction. So just to say that math is maybe some way to like bridge the gap to the, towards the root knowledge in a more objective, less emotional way. So it's maybe a great template for future work in the direction of root knowledge. If that's something that you're interested in, which, you know, it's good to understand. Most people aren't interested in, and that's all right. Because, you know, if everyone was interested in, we wouldn't be special, would we? Right? Anyway, just wanted to say that real quick about math. I don't know if I agree with you on the geometry, algebra metaphor with the spiritual and material, but hope we can develop more later and thanks.
Yes, I didn't really want to talk too much about the philosophy of mathematics today, although, you know, just wanted to put it out there. And, you know, me and Jennifer have different understandings of it. That's fine. So let's jump right in. Can you see my screen share?
Yeah, it's looking good.
Okay. So these are all things I found this, you know, generic. So here would be an X Y plane with a circle. And, you know, so here's your basic degrees, which is the old Babylonian system of zero to 360, which could be considered arbitrary versus pi, which in a 360 grid, it takes two pi to get around the circle. So, you know, if you're going from zero, one on the X axis to one, zero to zero, one to negative one, zero, which is pi. And then back around is two pi. And then I'll also show quickly the Pythagorean theorem of another slide for that. But your, your basic triangles that make up these circles that, if you look, the points on the circle are all right triangles that you could, any point on the circle, you know, besides the zero, one, the top point, which is just a line, forms a right triangle, which is applicable to the Pythagorean theorem. And from there you could derive the lengths and, you know, so example, 30 degrees. You know, the radius is always one because it's a circle. And then you have half in the square root of three over two. And anyone who's familiar with basic trigonometry, let's say these are the solutions to the trigonometric formulas of like sine of 30, cosine of 30, 60. And we'll cover the basic trigonometry. And then on the negative side, it's the same, but with negatives. And, you know, so here you could see the complete unit circle showing the point. So if you had, as I said, the X Y graph, that you have a thing as a circle. But when you put the circle as an equation of, which would be x squared plus y squared equals r squared. In this case of a unit circle being one, that the various points on the circle on a graph, you know, these are the points. And, and these would also be the solutions to the basic trigonometric function. So this is, you know, about is basic, you know, this is what you call the unit circle. And, you know, when you learn trigonometry, like I learned this stuff, you know, high school, even ninth, 10th grade. But, you know, whenever you learn basic pre-algebra, algebra, you know, you learn about the circle and the degrees and the Pythagorean theorem. And here's your unit circle. I don't know if you had any comments on, you know, the most basic, you know, what is the unit circle?
Are you going to get to the cast rule at some point? Did you want me to cover that? Cause I've got that basically ready to go.
I'm not even sure what the cast rule is, but
It's a shorthand for these ratios of the unit circle. So let me finish what you wanted to say. Like how much longer do you have to do in the unit circle?
Well, so let me show this one on the Pythagorean theorem.
So are you done on the unit circle? Cause if you're done on the unit circle, I still have something to say on the unit circle before you move on.
Yeah. So I just want to go back to the Pythagorean.
Is that a yes or no? We're not done with the circle.
We're not done with the unit circle because the unit circle is dependent on Pythagorean theorem. I had another link up with this one into the chat and because the, really the Pythagorean theorem predates the understanding of the unit circle. And these points on the chart were originally, you know, discovered through the Pythagorean theorem. And I remember I took calculus three in University of Michigan, actually still friends on Facebook with my professor. And he made us come up with our own unique proof of the Pythagorean theorem. You know, the simple a squared plus b squared equals c squared. And this one has like 30 some proofs and you could see some geometric, your versions of just understanding what does it mean that a squared plus b squared equals c squared? And you, so when you saw the unit circle and we had the various points, all these values, you know, especially the ones that have the square roots are from Pythagorean theorem. And, you know, so historically, so, you know, I assume everyone knows, anyone watching this is more than familiar with the Pythagorean theorem. So I just thought this was an important thing to show. So I'll let Jennifer do a screen share if she wants. If you had something to show and then, and then the next thing I'm going to do is move into the sphere.
Right. So we didn't really talk about. I mean, this is important. Okay. There's a couple of important things here to remember. So here's your standard. I got two of them up here. Sign conventions. We need, if we're going to do any calculus at all, we need the sign conventions more or less down pat. So when you're talking about one of these, you've got, there's your sign convention. Anti-clockwise rotation. So you're always starting relative to the positive X axis. Why? Sign convention. Then you got the cast rule where you start out with an angle here, which is just be a generic angle. I know it says pi over six, but it works for any angle less than 90. And you draw out your bow tie here. And the absolute value of the, the various ratios of all these angles will be the same. So the sine, the cosine, the tangent, all the same. So are you falling so far? Have you heard this one before?
I think so. I mean, maybe you're describing slightly different way.
So it's called the cast rule because the cosines are positive in this quadrant. They're all positive in this quadrant. Sin is positive in this quadrant and then tangent is positive here. So it's like a shorthand to know. I mean, with computers, you don't really need to know this stuff, blah, blah, blah. I just think it's, I like knowing the mnemonics. Like I think there's value to doing these things without calculators and computers just to memorize numbers, almost like multiplication tables, just to keep the mind sharp in very basic numerical reasoning. But I guess that's neither here nor there. So I just wanted to draw attention to that. It's not mentioned as well as the cast rule when you're actually solving problems. Yep. And that's all I had to say.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, so this is, the unit circle is very basic and as I said, most people learn this, you know, as young kids. And, you know, so it's kind of basic to the sphere. So let me show something.
It's more basic to like a signal because you think of the unit sphere as the angle perpetually increasing. It goes from zero to 360, but it can keep going, right? Seven 20 and on and on and on. And then you think of when you are mapping a generic signal and you're extending the X axis out to infinity, that you're sort of, it's a projection on a farther distant value of X from zero of the unit sphere. That's the important thing is that you can go from a finite, infinite rotational array to if, or sorry, infinite rotational array to an infinite spatial array theoretically. That's the key takeaway with this unit circle. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going over this stuff for my own purposes, for my own things I'm trying to advance, which is going to be important for, if you were taking this in school, it would be more computational. Like for example, here is something I found, just they're pretty good slides out of Baghdad. This would be from a calculus three class. And you could see fourth lecture in calculus three cylindrical and spherical coordinates. And, you know, so you'd have a bunch of questions and you're being able to calculate answers correctly because the philosophy of mathematics doesn't necessarily matter for how we understand things. And, you know, it's more computational that we're expected to be able to compute answers correctly. And any metaphor that helps a student understand it better. And people could understand in their own way philosophically. It's, you know, occasionally you might have a question on like the philosophy of math in university, but very rarely. So let's get into more complicated things very quickly. So I found these slides pretty good. And we're talking about a coordinate system, reference systems, for example, like, like the globe. And, you know, for the coordinate system really historically comes much later. It's like the Cartesian coordinate system, Descartes, Fermat, the origin of the equation is really only three, 400 years old for how we modernly understand these things. But in terms of an equation that we have like an x equals y, a y equals mx plus b describing any line. You know, so also you could have equation of a cylinder in a sphere. And there's coordinate systems where you could describe instead of a typical X Y system, you could have radius and angle. And, you know, that's polar coordinates. And then when you take that to three dimensional, you have what's called cylindrical symmetry, cylindrical coordinate system in spherical. So cylindrical system is polar coordinates with radius and angle. And then a Z is the same as a height. In spherical symmetry has two angles, one in so say the X Y plane and a radius, and then another angle, which would be from the X Y plane to the Z plane. And, you know, if you think like longitude and latitude on earth is an example of a spherical coordinate system. It's very important. So here's a nice diagram. I was looking through for a whole bunch of stuff, just trying to find nice diagrams. So this, you know, just calculus course from Baghdad had online versions that were pretty good. And so you have the basic, you know, your point P exists in, you know, X, Y, Z as opposed to cylindrical, which has the angle from the origin and a radius and then a height. And the spherical has two angles and the radius. And here's your conversion factors. If people remember this, you know, from maybe high school or maybe if you had to have taken calculus three, a lot of times you, you don't really cover this in calculus one and two. And then they throw it at you in calculus three. And sometimes in high school, pre-calculus or algebra, they give you polar coordinates, just throw it at you. But once you get into higher level mathematics, you end up using polar coordinates, cylindrical coordinates all the time because circular spherical motion is extremely common. And then in terms of solving problems, many problems are much easier to solve, especially if it involves a sphere using spherical coordinates. And so you have to convert cylindrical from a regular X Y Z coordinate system to cylindrical coordinates, you have the simple conversion factor, x equals radius times cosine theta, y equals r times sine theta and the Z coordinate for the height is the same. And for your spherical coordinate system, it gets a little bit more complicated because you end up having two angles times each other, where the X coordinate is now rho because not the radius, radius is staying for the radius on the X Y plane. Rho becomes the radius in the three dimensional plane times sine of theta, sine of I forget what that, even the Greek, the phi times theta. So phi is the angle in the X Y coordinate. I mean, theta is the angle. I think that theta will remain the angle in the X Y coordinate and phi in the Z coordinate system. And this is just Pythagorean's coordinate system. That if you're looking, why would x equal a sine times a cosine? Because you Pythagorean's theorem are the pure definition of trigonometry, trigonometric functions like Jennifer showed that, that you have a right angle triangle and, and those are the, you know, basic definitions. So r rho. Here you have r equals x squared plus y squared equals z squared. But I guess the r here is actually your rho and then your tangent function. We might talk a little bit more about trigonometric.
I'm concerned that, can you go back one second? There may be an error here because my textbook is telling me that phi is between zero and pi. I could be wrong, but that is how I remember it too. It says two pi there because I did want to call attention to this important aspect. Yeah, that rho is not r.
Yeah, I think there might.
Like you said, because r is a two dimensional. And even if you're going into the three dimensional equivalent of polar coordinates, it's still not rho.
It's too time consuming for me to make my own slides. So I just looked.
No, it's fine. I'm not suggesting you make your own slides. I just want to call attention to this important thing about the integral bounds. When you're talking about spherical coordinates is you're literally having to go through every angle in the sphere, every independent angle. All right. That's all I had to say.
Okay. So here in cylindrical coordinate system, for example, you know, simple, if your equation is just r equals one, you have a cylinder, a hollow cylinder of of radius one. And if you divide an equation that had theta and just an angle, pi equals three, it's not a full plane because it would only be projecting from the axis in one direction. But at that angle, you would have a plane starting at the Z axis, projecting at the direction. And if you had z equals four, you would have a plane at a various direction. And in spherical coordinates, if you just had your rho equals one, that's the equation of a sphere. So as I said, in regular Cartesian coordinate system, the equation of a sphere is x squared plus y squared plus z squared equals one. And the benefit in spherical coordinates is it, the equation is just one, that the rho equals one. And that is the equation of a sphere using spherical coordinate systems. And I guess also the plane, if you have just, so unfortunately there's errors in, in this chart I found. So, you know, it's difficult to, it would have taken too much work for the purpose of the stream to make my, make my own slides. It looks like there's some errors in this. And then you could see the type shape if you have phi like being an angle here, pi divided by four gives you a cone. And then you have cones that would be emerging in both, both directions also. And, you know, because I took this from a university course, you know, it has a bunch of questions. So, you know, when I took calculus in school, they had a bunch of questions and I used, me and Jennifer both used to tutor questions. And I remember University of Michigan, I used to sit in the math lab and just volunteer, help people out. And you have these kind of weird questions about intersecting shapes, like a sphere, a crossover between a sphere, a cylinder or various things. And you have to decide what the best coordinate system is to use. And then sometimes you'd have to, usually you'd have to set it up as an integral and it'd be some sort of like subtraction where you'd have one shape and you have to subtract the other shape. And these are the type of questions that, you know, people do in university math. But you do a bunch of these questions, the point is to become very familiar with the techniques and to be able to make calculations of you eventually move into engineering. And, you know, the goal is say that you, you don't really work with shapes like in engineering. You work with equations. So in practical engineering, you work with objects and objects exist in shape. But in terms of, you know, the engineering side of engineering, you don't work for objects, you work with equations. So being able to convert shapes into equations is, you know, a key skill. So that's why in university, they make you do hundreds and hundreds of problems like my father. You know, I said, you really want to do well, you gotta do all the problems in the back of the chapter. And you do hundreds of these problems and you know, you become quite masterful at working with these coordinate systems that you would be able to take a shape and um, determine the best way to define its equation. Uh, whether that be, you know, what coordinate system would be the best coordinate system to define it in. And uh, you know, the spherical a- and then uh, you know, if you were actually trying to then do physics with it. Uh, you know, applying laws as opposed to just defining geometric shapes. So uh, you know, so here you have the basics of the coordinate systems. I'm not sure if uh, did you prepare or did you want to do like a a whiteboard on of uh, on this?
Probably not a bad idea. Are we gonna start with uh, polar?
Um, whatever you want.
Or you just want me to go into spherical? Because I think, you know, we didn't really, we sort of breeze through polar, but there's polar and then there's the three dimensional version of polar, right? And that is cylindrical? And cylindrical is really important for maps. I took an entire course on uh, map making and math and uh, really enjoyed it. And so we learned about uh, stereographic projection, Mercator projection, I I think that may be the same thing, but stuff like that. So really important thing we learned was the G O D six on a sphere, the shortest distance to two points on a sphere, so. Anyway, all that to say that coordinate systems are super important. So the basic one that we're looking at is X Y, which we've seen a lot of times. So that's orthogonal dimensionally. And that's about it. And then you can throw in a Z too if you want, which would be like that. We're not gonna do that right yet, but anyway, that's what you're basically starting at, which is basic, basic, basic Cartesian. What are the axioms there? Uh, the the determining factor one appears to be the parallel lines don't ever intersect. This appears to be necessitated by basically like the backbone of these Linlatch proofs, which you could see. It's like, well, if these things aren't perpendicular to each other and perpendicular to the functional parallelism, uh, you know, the the whole thing basically falls apart. So it's a question of like, what is the best way to describe a point? And uh, well, originally we just said, we're gonna say, well, here's the X coordinate and here's the Y. And that's gonna be the ordered pair. And that's it. And then we discovered that doesn't actually work so well. So instead, we're gonna throw down, whoops, I made that a straight line, from the origin, which is the point at which X and Y axes intersects. So these are, this is still kind of called the X and Y axes. That sign convention doesn't really ever go away, so you're sort of just like super imposing a new coordinate system on top of the Cartesian one. So we'll throw, we've got the R here, which is the magnitude of this uh, line. So R is not like X and Y. Exactly. It's a distance, but it's along the axis of the point connecting the origin. Radius. And then we have an angle, whoops, an angle, which is called theta. So we're just looking to like derive one point from the other. We invoke the sine and cosine laws to give that X is R sine theta. And then Y is R cosine theta, I think. Is that right? Or actually, I think I got it wrong. Help me out here. I don't even, I I'm not the greatest at doing this thing on the fly here. Alright, X is R cosine theta. There we go. Made a mistake.
Yeah, that's kind of why I wanted to make make this stream so we we have a, you know, perfection of this. Because uh, you know, when I was in University of Michigan, I did this tens, hundreds, hundreds of times even, you know, people walking people through uh, the basics and it's very easy to mix this up. And you know, just have this clear in our heads for our own purposes. And uh, you know, something relatively, this is pretty basic. It builds off each other and uh, you know, you error in the smaller elements. When it gets to the more complicated elements, uh, you know, I said that uh, you know, if people learn arithmetic to uh, algebra, trigonometry, calculus. And any mistake in any of the elements will give you the wrong answer. So you know, mathematics requires uh, precision. So you know, that's part of the reason we're going through this. Um, and uh, you know, hopefully, you know, really want to talk about more complicated things. Both of us are out of university for a while, don't work in mathematical fields where we use this daily. So it's partially a review for us and uh, and you know, so I appreciate, uh, you know, like I said, like 10 years ago, I did this probably hundreds of times, just tutoring people, but I haven't done it in a decade.
So that's about it. Um, that works when you're uh, with a spinning system, with a fixed radius and a continuously varying angle. And uh, there's no change to the Z coordinate for this one when you go into 3D. And uh, yeah, probably, I just wanted to remind people how I got that relation through the Sokotoa mnemonic device, where the sine ratio is opposite over hypotenuse, cosine is adjacent over hypotenuse, tangent is opposite over adjacent. So the cosine of theta would be the Y coordinate. I can't believe I made it, I I made another mistake, put X instead of Y. This is a probably like, this is probably danger zone for me to try to do so many, to try to think about so many things at once. You know, mistakes all over the place. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm just gonna fix it. My computer stops freezing. But anyway, this supposed to be a Y. Y is the vertical one and X is the horizontal one and no. And this might be asking just a bit too much for my computer in terms of processing power, but here we go. Okay, so Y coordinate, R sine theta, X coordinate, R cosine theta. And you could just easily convert between them. This one is not that complicated. The one I I find the the spherical was a little bit harder to to work with. But you gotta think of it as a reverse engineering thing. You're starting with a system and it has a certain type of symmetry. It can have a spherical symmetry or it can have a cylindrical symmetry, so something spinning around with a constant radius. Now, if that's the case, then the spherical or cylindrical coordinate system will be better modeling fit in terms of computational complexity for that particular system. So this is all relative to the system, very important thing to remember. So I'll go to the next demo, which will be the spherical coordinate system. So I have to draw this one in 3D, so let's keep our fingers crossed that I can actually do this. So are you familiar with the 3D array? I'm assuming, I'm assuming yes, David.
Um.
Zed's up here, I think.
Yeah, I think so. And some, because me and Jennifer are in different places, I'm I'm just seeing your green screen. And uh, a lot of times you have different terminology. So uh, and that's also part of why we're doing this, to have precise terminologies, so you're familiar with this. Uh, you know, something that, you know, the terminology that, uh, how I learnt it or how I read it will be familiar to the way someone else describes it.
So this is uh, rotation of the axes so that you can see all three at once. But there is, you know, ninety degree angle between everything that's not really there, but it's this presumed to be there. And then you have this circle, well, sorry, this sphere. So we're looking to plot a point um, that's a given distance from the origin, that's also on the surface of the sphere here. Maybe I should make that a different color, eh? So just throw a little point on the sphere here and then we start with the X Y Z. So the question is, how many steps down the X axis do I need to take? Y axis, how many steps in the direction of each axis respectively do I need to take to get to my point? Let me draw this little parallelogram here, would include the origin and all the axes and the point. And so we want to know how we go from that to again, a distance from the origin to the point, which is rho. How many more very, uh, how many more values do we need to fully describe this point here? And since we're in R three, we know we need three coordinates. So it's a question of, well, what are the, like, what are the best coordinates we could use type thing? So the way that it was reduced was to go through uh, three hundred and sixty degrees on uh, the X and Y axis. So we'll be going around, starting, like I said before, you always start with a positive X axis. So the and the level on which they're labeled, that's the positive direction. So here you go, from there and then back again, you make that full circle rotation. I'm trying to draw it on a bit of an angle to kind of include the three dimensionality of it. Can you see that, David?
Yeah, I see it fine and uh,
So this angle here is called theta. Theta is your most common angle. And it goes through three sixty or two pi. Now you've gone in a circle, so you don't need to go like, you do need to go into the Z axis because you've only gone around the X Y axis. You need to go up into 3D, but you don't need to go three hundred and sixty degrees. So that's why the variation on the secondary angle goes from the positive Z axis down to the negative Z axis, where you have a phi is between zero and pi. Whoops, whereas theta is between zero and two pi. That's a really important thing. I don't know, it's not a sign convention, it's just a a fact of life that uh, that you can't have redundancy in these calculations because the calculations physically mean something and you don't want to count through angles twice. And this basic aspect of this sort of can be extrapolated to other things like models can. It's easy to screw up a model and get the bounds of integration wrong if you're not doing uh, what one of my colleagues likes to call a sanity check. So does that help at all, David?
Yeah, I mean, these reviews are always useful in saying that, you know, we want to jump into really some of the most complicated ideas in the world. Um, you know, right now we're talking like the multiverse or a projection, holography. Which is based off of this and you know, extremely complicated. If you look at a math book, uh, you know, kind of like, my father has a huge library of these math books. And you see like the first chapter, even as like a ten year old kid, I was able to read. Uh, but then you get into it and there are just pages and pages of equations that are describing very complicated uh, things. So it said that uh, um, you know, the purpose of this review, uh, you're just to publicly put it out there, put me and Jennifer on the same page as we talk about more complicated things like, you know, I don't really need Jennifer's review of this basic things. I've done this uh, myself, but it's, you know, it's useful, uh, you know, you know, just for our level of communication and to put it out there as a service, people who listen to us. And you know, Jennifer wants to do math tutorials of of basic things that uh, you know, it's a useful thing. I'm usually willing to sit down and explain basic math to somebody, kind of like tutoring at chess or something like that. Someone has like basic questions, introduction, like how do the pieces move? I'll tell someone how the pieces move, even though I could be talking about advanced strategy. So it's the same with mathematics. Um, and it's a sign of expertise to be able to take the most basic concept to the highest level. So we were talking about like the Riemann sphere or something like that, uh, to, you know, show that uh, it is based off of the, you know, a simple progression of simple principles.
Yeah, it's geometrically not that uh, like intuitively, it's not that complicated, but it has a pretty complicated geometry, I guess. So yeah, definitely.
And he's saying esoterically, when you're looking at a descriptive factor, uh, you know, like describing something in physical space by a concept, um, which which when we talk about like, you know, platonic, the idea existing in a separate realm or something like that, which is likely what the people who developed these theories, even up to Leibniz, believed. That you know, mathematics, algebra wasn't a factor of the material realm, it was a factor of the spiritual realm. Uh, but to to say, how how can you describe a physical object? And then from that description, if it's a mathematical equation, that uh, you know, that I could send Jennifer an equation and she could uh, um, you know, blow up the equation into a shape and she would have the exact shape that I'm talking about. And then there'd be multiple ways to describe that uh, same shape in different equations that would all produce the same result, as of the different coordinate system, the X squared plus Y squared plus Z squared. Uh, versus uh, you know, simpler description in spherical coordinate system where where just rho equals one uh, is the description of a circle that would both produce the same object. Um, but the um, the axioms possibly for spherical coordinates is more complicated than the axioms for Cartesian coordinates of X Y Z.
It's the same axiom. There there's a slight, there's no difference because they're both included in the uh, Euclidean axioms. But there is a a de facto slight difference because one being like revolution centric and one being more of a linear model. Like Cartesian playing X Y Z is is very much a linear propulsion model.
Yeah, even mention.
That the other ones with the variable um, angle are all for like rotational systems.
Yeah, if uh, you know, like Euclid, his last book is dealing with the platonic uh, shapes. And uh, you know, he, they didn't have algebra in ancient times or equations. They had maybe algorithms or kind of like recipes, that if you did this, this would happen. Or understandings of way to perme- permeate numbers as opposed to an abstract explanation of an object. And uh, so you know, that was pretty basic and saying, we didn't prepare this over time. So this can just like publicly putting it out there, put me and Jennifer on the same page. And uh, you know, we'll, we probably will both do this in the future. Uh, but you really want to get into more complicated topics. So with that, let's start looking at a little bit more complicated things. So uh, let me show one more thing here. This is um, what we call a parametric equation of a circle. And this just has a time factor where instead of having um, this is just in two dimensions, but it'd be the same in three dimension. And if we're watching, we can review like.
Are you, are you saying that theta is theta of T? Is that it? The angle is a function of time? Well, I can't quite read it. I'm just assuming that's what this is about. Because yeah, the parametric stuff's super important because the Thad stuff is in parametric form.
Well, usually it's time as opposed to theta and in the idea is generally.
Well, theta is still there, it's just theta of T. You can't get rid of theta if you're on the unit circle.
Yeah, I'm just saying that uh, that it is T and it is usually time. And the point of making it T in time as opposed to having, you know, so to say, an equation that matches a shape, which would be you'd have another equation that goes from zero to something else. And I guess the graphic isn't working, that as T increases, the circle is formed. So if you had, um, I I guess in this case it'd be zero to two pi. So if you started T at zero and then went to two pi, that uh, it would draw a circle. So so to say in parametric uh, no notation, whi- which is similar to vectors. I I didn't uh, mention to cover the vectors either, but so to say, just an equation like X squared plus Y squared uh, plus Z squared equals one is a sphere. And to parametris it where you have uh, three different equations corresponded to a T. Um, you know, if it was like X squared equals T, Y squared equals T, Z squared equals T. And then you have T starting at zero and growing, that the equation would form a circle as opposed to just defining the equation, like so to say, X squared plus Y squared plus Z squared equals uh, R R squared is just a, is just a sphere. Um, so you have the sphere as the definition of what the equation defines as opposed to when you have it in parametric. as opposed to when you have it in parametric notation, that the shape somewhat forms, that it starts as a point or, uh, uh, a curve or a solid. And then as T increases, the solid is formed as opposed to just a definition where the shape is there all at once. I'm not sure if you'd describe it differently.
That was a succulent description bordering on poetry.
So it's important because in reality, most things are in parametric notation. When you work with them in mathematics, because you, you know, you don't just have a sphere. You have, um, an object that grows. So here if people took calculus and I don't like the notation here, I don't know if, uh, Jennifer wanted to do this. I've done this many times. Um, but if you wanted a volume of an object, that's what an integral is. An integral is the area under a curve. If it's a two dimensional shape, like a circle, it would be, you know, an integral. Um, so if you, if you had, you know, Y squared plus X squared equals R squared, which R would be a constant. And, uh, and then you'd have to put that in, you know, take the square root of, uh, you, you get the Y equals and then do an integral and, uh, and you would come up with the same things that the Greeks, uh, figured out through different ways, but also the volume. So, uh, you know, people know that the volume of a, of a sphere is, uh, for, um, for our, for our cubed, uh, four pi R cubed, four, uh.
I'm just looking at this, uh, L's not defined here. Uh, what's L?
Yeah. So this one is.
Is L a rho?
Like, I'm not sure. So I, I was just looking for graphics and so it doesn't pay to critique, you know, whatever you random.
Not a critique, it's a desire to want to understand what the heck is being written here. And if they don't tell me what L is.
This is just some random thing I found on the internet and searched through a whole bunch and, um.
So you didn't actually verify that this made sense?
Well, no, it's problematic, but it's, it's difficult finding good material. So I'm going to show something else, but this one had, you know, seven ways to compute the volume of a sphere. And you have in rectangular coordinates, spherical coordinates, cylindrical coordinates, and then a few other, uh, methods and, you know, um, so you know, this one, I found another text. I mean, they're all over. This is in every calculus three book or something like that where said in, uh, um, you know, here you have rectangular in cylindrical coordinates in a sphere. So in cylindrical coordinates, um, you just have radius squared plus Z squared equals C squared as opposed to spherical coordinates. You have X squared plus Y squared plus Z squared equals C squared. If you want to compute the volume, you'd have to take an integral, but because it's three dimensional, it would be a triple integral. And then, I mean, there's also the method people maybe learned in calculus two of rotating an object around the origin. And then, you know, so if people put calculus and had a bunch of problems, if you just had a section of, you know, like, uh, of a cylinder and wanted the area of just a small section, how you'd define the boundaries in order to do that. And I, I didn't prepare these problems, um, but just, uh, you're just to show people who took calculus, how, uh, how these would look. So, um, here's an example. And this is just a calculus textbook I found free online. So, you know, th- this would be like, what's the volume of a cylinder embedded in a sphere? Uh, you know, radius four and, uh, and then you have the radius of the cylinder. And then you have to set up the integral and you have to, you know, figure out what the best coordinate system to use. Are you going to use, um, so in this case they're using cylindrical coordinates. And then you have to just say, what's the equation of the object that you're going to be integrating? And then what is the boundaries that you're integrating from? And then to actually compute, uh, the integral. So, uh, you know, here, here's just the textbook example. I'm not sure if you want to go through and, and do the simple example of just, uh, proving that, uh, through calculus of a triple integral that, uh, the area of a sphere is in fact four thirds pi R cubed. Or, or if, uh, you know, if you wanted to do that, you can. Otherwise I just, you're kind of showing, these are basic things that anyone's taken university calculus, you know, has, has, uh, done.
I haven't prepared to go through that proof, so I don't think it's a good idea given that I couldn't even, seeing as I couldn't even derive, uh, polar coordinates without making a mistake twice. Don't want to try my hand at that. It's such a complicated thing. Do you want to fly? But, uh, yeah, I do want to see you attempt to derive Euler's identity. Look forward to that. Were there any key takeaways from these, uh, coordinate systems? Oh, I, I wanted to mention that like, we're not talking about evaluating something over, um, as a volume over continuously varying attribute like temperature. We're just at the stage of defining volume in terms of triple integrals. It's sort of be like integrating a line to make a cube in the standard Cartesian, except we're using a coordinate system that's more natural. We're going in the direction of something of a more natural system. Go ahead.
Yeah. And if you keep it pretty basic and, you know, it's kind of like chess of you, if you're like, you have a lot, it's, it's chunking theory that we talked about and, you know, me and Jennifer haven't sat down and actually done these problems in years. It becomes more difficult and we forget how to do it that years ago, like, you know, I could have just answered a whole bunch of questions, one after the next of college calculus people wanting help with their homework. And, you know, how to, uh, take triple integrals of shape. And then I haven't done in so long that I'm not even sure I, I could accurately do a triple integral just of a sphere. Um, you know, that, that, uh, you say is relatively simple. And there was also kind of the part of the stream to, to, uh, I've been studying this stuff. And hopefully we're, we can review, it's going to become more mathematically intensive and, and for our own benefit, uh, you will actually do some of the stuff so it remains fresh in our head. So, uh, with that, you know, so me and Jennifer embarrassed ourselves by how much of our basic math we have forgotten by being.
I'm not embarrassed because even, uh, even when I was really good, I don't think I would have been able to do it live because I would have had to know exactly what the proof was going to be rather than just do it on, on the fly. So. But, uh, yeah, definitely a little rusty. So it'd be good to catch back up. Leonard Euler looks like, uh, you know, non plus Wojak there, doesn't he?
Yeah, I'm, I'm no comment, uh, but say, you know, when, when you're in university, generally, uh, you teach. So if you, if you trying to get a PhD, uh, they might have you teach, uh, you know, freshman undergraduate, uh, calculus. And through doing, you know, the, the, I just went through the courses, but if you taught, you know, undergraduate calculus, UTA, you do thousands of these problems, you grade homework. You've seen so many of them, uh, you know, really, we're not, I'm not, I'm not really here to talk about chunking theory. Uh, but it becomes ingrained by doing it than by teaching it and, uh, checking, uh, problems of other people and just seeing thousands and thousands. So me and Jennifer did relatively well, good students, uh, did a little tutoring. It's not the same as, uh, you know, someone that, uh, maybe got a PhD in mathematics and taught an undergraduate course where they actually had to grade the homework of the students who are trying to do this. And, you know, the certain level of, uh, and then, you know, if you're an engineer, what the practicality of what would you be doing in, uh, regular life that would actually, um, it'd require you to, uh, use something like this on a regular basis. So, uh, there's another sphere that, this is going to become important for, um, what I'm trying to advance with, uh, kind of like the holographic universe is also the complex plane. So, um, Euler's famous formula, which I'm going to show proof, you know, is the famous, uh, uh, has appear, um, this is Euler's formula. E to the I, here it is phi or theta equals cosine theta plus i sine theta. Um, or in, uh, if you give it a value, E to the I pi equals negative one. So this is Euler's formula, um, where it's a generic formula that is useful for any value. Um, but if you plug in pi, the answer is negative one. So I, I will, I've, I've shown some stuff to derive, actually a few basic proofs of, uh, of this. And, uh, but, but one more important thing is the complex coordinate system. So as opposed to having X, Y coordinate system, you have complex numbers where you have your X axis would be your real numbers and your Y axis would be, uh, the complex coordinate system. And, uh, and there's also a way, uh, you say, so to say to define it in a, in a circle. And, uh, this one had useful graphics. So if you look at, you know, I to the zero power equals one. I to the first power equals I, I squared equals negative one. I cubed equals negative I, I to the fourth equals one. And so.
Yeah. You have something that repeats itself every four iterations.
Yeah. So if you see on a circular, uh, plane like that, that it will become circular. So you have, uh, you know, this, when we get to Riemann sphere, this is, uh, Riemann sphere is, uh, defined in the complex, uh, plane. And you see it's E, uh, becomes circular, uh, because of the nature that, uh, you know, I, uh, I to the zero equaling one, putting you here, I to, uh, I squared, uh, I to the, I to the one, bringing you to the top is where I squared, you know, giving you negative one and, uh, in being, uh, circular. And, uh, let me, let me show these slides here that I, I found. So, you know, basic Euler, you see his years. Um, he actually is in disagreement and a lot of his theories were against, um, Leibniz monology. So me, me and Jennifer, for the last few months have been talking a lot about Leibniz and monology. And, uh, I mentioned, uh, uh, you know, the formulation of calculus for how it is in our modern times is, is the work of quite a few different people. Um, but I think Euler was a dualist. So a lot, you know, so it's interesting, you know, to think about that in turn, you know, the, the, these were spiritual religious people and they had, you know, at that point, engineering was not that well developed. And calculus was more within religious studies, was more to describe spiritual phenomenon. And, uh, you know, so we will be returning to this, but Euler, uh, you know, is slightly after Leibniz. They were alive, I think at the same time for quite a bit of time. Uh, he's in Basel, Switzerland. He studied under Bernoulli, who are also great mathematicians, advancers of, uh, calculus. And, uh, you could see famous that Euler, um, in his terms of advancing for what everybody basically who studies math does today, that, uh, using the Greek pi for pi, uh, using I for the square root of negative one, uh, delta for change, like delta Y. Um, you know, Leibniz had the DX DY, uh, but using the delta signal symbol for change and the definition of a function where you have F of X as a function and the, the Greek.
It's probably worth mentioning that this guy was born some thirty plus years after calculus was first, uh, defined by two people, right? At least just wanted to make that clear historically.
Yeah. So, so I mean, calc, like, like religion, uh, you know, calculus becomes canonized. And, uh, I think it was, I forget the name even, who I mentioned on week in review the other day, who, uh, you know, much later than Euler canonizes kind of the function, the, the form till today. But a lot of the things that's still in use today was canonized from Euler. So I mean, so he didn't come up with the ideas.
Who are you thinking about? Um, canonized post Euler?
Yeah, I, I shared, I read a book on week in review and, and.
Elbert Lorenz, one of, one of them or? I think I might have all worked or who, who I'm just drawing a blank. So I'm thinking the mathematical greats were before this time. Was they?
Well, I mean, the, the calculus, the canonization of the calculus symbols that we use today in the generic understanding of a function. And as said, the, 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 I'll do a quick, uh, the, the creator of the fundamental theory of calculus and the name uh, that, uh, that the derivative, the, the integral and the, the derivative are, are defined as opposites. And that wasn't the original, um, understanding of, of it, you know.
Well, of course not. Uh, I mean, it's not, uh, it's more accurate to say inverse operators. Want to stay away from words like opposite. They're not specific enough in math that doesn't even, well, doesn't define as many negations as it could, but still quite a lot more than just one possible negation.
Um, yeah. So, so what, how, what exactly these things mean? And, uh,
You're probably thinking of Fourier. Fourier did come after him. Seventeen sixty-eight to eighteen thirty. Were you thinking of Fourier? Maybe Gauss?
No, no, I forget the, it's not the name, uh, uh, basically the idea that, uh, uh, derivative as a anti, uh, integral is an anti-derivative.
Oh, yeah, that's a bit later. Isn't it? I mean, it seems so obvious now, but, uh, definitely at the time they didn't fully understand what they were looking at.
There's about the divergence and, you know, so it's kind of a, um, public study session here. If, uh, you know, so we're not math teachers and, uh, we're not officially, uh, so it's, it's going to be too long for me to come out with a name. I said it on week in review, uh, the, the other day, but, uh, you're just a different way of defining, uh, these, these objects and what these ideas or the canonization of the ideas. And then, you know, there's dispute in the canonization of, uh, these ideas. And, uh, um, how we, how we understand it today or the different purposes that the people who designed these, if Newton's main purpose of the calculus was to describe the relationship between, uh, physics of, uh, position and, uh, velocity and acceleration as opposed to Leibniz, which, who was more trying to talk about the relationship between the spiritual and material realm to, uh, some sort of canonization of a mathematical structure that is useful to, uh, you know, anybody in, in terms of more computation and, uh, solving answers. And just the question, what is an integral in, in, what's the purpose of the integrals? The purpose of the integral to calculate, um, area? Or is the purpose of the integral to show the relationship between, um, position, velocity and acceleration? Or is the purpose of the integral to, uh, you know, to answer the epicurean trilemma of, uh, of how evil happens in, uh, you, they're, they're all similar, that they're all fundamentally doing the same thing. Although there are, are certain elements. And then if you learn modern calculus today, you have the fundamental theorem of calculus. And, uh, for some reason, the name I was thinking is not, I, I can't even seem to find it. So let's just, uh, move on. It's the purpose of these streams is say that we're trying to talk to people and share these ideas and, uh.
If anyone in the audience knows who Dubit has no clue who he's referring to, and I have no clue who it is either. And I put about five names out there. I do have a quick description of, um, what the integral is that I could present at any time.
Okay, good. So I'll, if you want to share your screen, I'll, I'll, I'll share you so I could find this, find this name.
Sweet. Perfect time. Yeah. So these are my notes from when I was a professional tutor. Yes, that's right. People used to pay me good money to teach this stuff. A lot. So, yeah. Deal. Um, indefinite integrals deal with infinity, blah, 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 blah. That's where it gets into the metaphysical stuff. To what extent is this infinity on the axis representative of anything? Answer fuck all. Comment, doesn't matter. Uh, secondary comment, why? Cause math. Secondary comment, why? Because math's cool and nobody cares if it's worth anything because it's worth enough, even if it's not objectively true. So let's just stop crying. A definite integral. You're looking at question, which is what is the area in this case, a simplified two dimensional version, which can then once understood be extrapolated to arbitrary dimension hypothetically. So we're wondering what the area is and we have a axis at the bottom and a function at the top. So what we're going to do is divide up chunk this area into equally sized quadrilaterals that aren't rectangles quite, but because they are going to have different, slightly different Y values. And so long as F is differentiable, you can determine this area exactly. So that's the real power of integral calculus. So just like, well, we didn't, we didn't go through derivative calculus, but basically you'd be looking at a limit of a slope of a tangent at a point of a function. So this is why they didn't know they were inverse operators right away. So integrals answering the question, given this setup bounding line and a bounding curve and two bounding points, which are extrapolated to lines to match the curve. What is the area? This is the actually opposite operation as what is the instantaneous slope of the tangent at a given point? Don't ask me how. It's just one of those miracles. Moving on. And we had this correspondence between how you start off your map as a finite number of delta Xs. And remember that's this right here and the X axis, the tiny delta X I've got, this is actually a terrible diagram now that I look at it. It seems like I was not super careful in making this, but I guess here we have the integral on the left hand side, which is your limit form versus your non-limit form on the right. So you would start with the Riemann sum on the right. And then when you take the limit of the Riemann sum, you get to the integral. And I have some very, okay, Dubit's already lost interest. You can see, we have some various examples here. You choose right hand endpoints, left hand endpoints. Testy, this is just against sign convention. So this is not probably super interesting to people, but it is sort of fun. I just find math for sort of fun just for their own. Just for the heck of it. Probably in a minority on that. Another thing we haven't got to yet. Oh, Dubit, are you back? Ready to keep going? Because I, I'm done with what I was saying. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, it's more, I'm not doing a history of calculus lecture. So I have to go through my library to, you know, try to remember all these names, which is important, but, but too far off topic. So, you know,
I'm sure it'll come to you on the bus. That's what my uncle always says.
Was more the circle and it's important. I was said that, you know, quoting your sources and it's somewhat of a, you know, chunking knowledge of mastery.
Someone said Koishi in the chat.
Kochi is one of the big names, but he's not the name I'm looking for. I mean, like, actually, the, I'm going to be talking about couch, the couch, the couchy Riemann hypothesis that the Riemann sphere is, you actually, the formula is called the couchy Riemann. I think I was doing this thing the other day and it was saying like, see our surfaces and those that, that's couch agreement services. But that's not the name I'm looking for. It's more in terms of the canonization and more, not necessarily someone who came up with a theorem, but who canonized the language that we use to express these ideas that, you know, saying when you take calculus in school, you have all these symbols and methods for doing it. And it was canonized. So just, you know, get off veered because I was mentioning, you know, at least the slides here that, you know, whoever made these slides, you know, might even not be that accurate, but Euler is generally credited with the F of X for the definition of a function. And it's just mentioned Euler wrote more than 500 books and papers during his lifetime. That his collected works fill seventy-three large volumes, tens of thousands of pages with more volume still coming out from records of stuff that Euler wrote. Euler is probably the single most common name in in mathematics. And I think, you know, the E, I think is refers to Euler, actually, when we say the E.
It does. It does indeed. Yeah. It's very special discovery that.
Yeah. Although the idea of E possibly predated, so here it just has, you know, what I was talking earlier, the representation of complex numbers on, on a graph. So you say if real numbers are, you know, line versus complex numbers. This one actually is, we might talk about this a different time, but quarter, uh, court, uh, quaternions and actonions.
I think it's quaternion.
Yeah, this actually is somewhat related, I think, to quantum physics, this stuff, but it's not, not for today. But the E has many unique properties. Usually the definition of E is, is could just be defined as one plus one, usually just one divided by N to the nth. Here you have it in complex notation with a pi. But E, if you, one plus one divided by N to the nth will give you the value of E. And if you take it to any level, you know, E is a transcendental number. And, you know, so just connecting it, this is going to be just a graphic of the proof of Euler's famous formula. So just thinking here's like an anime animation depicting
This is what I was talking, alluding to before about the trend. Not sure what you call it, a isomorphism from the unit sphere under infinite rotation to the full X axis for a regular sinusoidal signal like Greenie and Louie there.
Yeah. So as something that would be infinite moving on the X plane in a complex notation could just be seen as traversing around the circle again and again. So here's somewhat of a graphics of this Euler's equation, E to the I pi, I X or theta, some different symbols equals cosine X plus I sine X of some way to try to visualize it. This is Euler's formula. And as I said, if X equals pi, then you have the negative one, which we'll see the various, I think here. So here you just, you know, a simple example, if you see that your zero. So here you have Euler's identity and, you know, the famous equation of E to the I pi equals negative one. Graphics, I'll, I'll put this in the chat and I guess hyperbolic functions. I'm sorry, producing a low quality stream. I apologize. But you just put it out there because, you know, we need the, you know, a lot of research or just put it out there. So this is a Taylor expansion. So one way to prove, there's multiple methods to prove Euler's formula. So one is the Taylor expansion. And it's an advanced mathematical method. Sometimes you learn Taylor, Taylor series even in pre-calculus. But you could use an expansion method to define functions. So example cosine X is, you know, this expansion of one minus X squared divided by two. I forget what the exclamation point, the, the, how that's
factorial.
Factorial plus, and then it goes, you know, plus X to the fourth, four factorial minus X to the sixth factorial going up by twos, the power divided by the factorial plus and minus. As we're assigned is opposite starting with X and three minus plus to the third. And then you have E to the X is one plus X plus X squared divided by two factorial plus X cube divided by three factorials. And there's proof, you're going more to Taylor series, how these are derivatives. So one example of, did you want to mention anything about Taylor series and the origins of these expansions?
Other things to look at that are also relevant to this topic are McLaurin series and epsilon delta. That's the type of proof for a series convergence, which does end up being pretty important because you want an intuition for intervals over which series converge. Not just whether they converge, but out of the set of all possible models, which converges the fastest, right? So that's where we're, you get on my level type thing. That's where we're sort of taking these problems eventually. So Taylor series, McLaurin series, which is a special case as a Taylor series. Epsilon delta proofs, as well as other varietals of proofs. But those would be your, your most important heavy duty interrelational ones that easily lend themselves to the hyperbolic geometry that's more or less necessitated for an accurate depiction of causality. We may even need to come in and change it again. If it may not be entangled enough, right? Because these models are ultimately failing. Not to get off on a rant here, because spacetime's not being modeled in the proper degree of entanglement. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, I mean, kind of why I wanted to do the stream and I want to encourage Jennifer to do streams like this on her channel. Maybe I'll join her occasionally, other people in, in for week interview that will be more technically correct and refresh yourself. And you'll be able to you'll use some of these things to, to express the ideas we're talking about. And so say mathematically correct way that you people of classical university education would say that corresponds to, you know, how they were taught to how they understand things. But you, if just seeing that the, there is a method to expand functions, to define functions in terms of expansions and Fourier series is similar also in that venue. And, you know, so if you just see
We lost you for a second, I think. I'm not sure.
Okay. Will you hear me?
Yeah, you're good now. It's just for a quick second.
Okay. So if you see here, if you look at the equation, E to the I X equals cosine of X plus I sine of X. That if you look at the Taylor and McLaurin expansion, that it corresponds with the expansion. So we had, you know, here that E the X equals one plus X plus X squared divided by two factorial sine of X, X.
Yeah. The principle of indistinguishable two sets are equivalent if and only if all their elements are in common. Right? That's what this is a proof of a standard equivalence proof.
Yeah. Maybe we'll talk more in week in review and other things on, on the philosophy of mathematics. Like what is a proof? What does it mean to be true or equivalent if, you know, being equivalent, but what that means. But you see that the expansions of the equivalent, so if you have E to the I X equals cosine X plus I sine X. And then you look at the expansions, you have cosine X. And if you multiply I times sine X, so in the expansion, I would be in all the elements. And then you add those together, you add cosine X and I sine X, you get you know, this, this here, the one plus I X minus X squared divided by two factorial. Not sure if they make minus I to the X cube. Yes. I guess you get minus, minus, plus, plus, minus, minus. And then if you look, because of the nature of the I being squared. And, and then if you compare that to E to the X and you say E to the I X is one plus I X divided by one factorial plus I X squared. And, and you see the nature of the signs will be the same because I squared is going to be negative one.
Yeah. Just, just to be clear, like if, if someone wanted to present this as an actual proof, can you go to the next slide for a sec? Yeah, that one, that one. Uh, no, wait, hang on. Can you go to the one after? Can you go back to? Sorry, I must have been in the wrong direction. I just want to just this one here. You would never write a proof like this. You would not write that, you would write demonstrate that E to the I X is da, da, da. And then you say, let cos and then let this and then let, and then you'd say, I'm going to add them together now. And then you'd show how the thing added together had all the same elements as the E to the I X based on some existing definition. And then you'd conclude E to the I X is that this wave rated writing, it looks a lot like they're presupposing the premise. So, yeah, this is actually not a great proof because it doesn't really prove that these McLaurin series converge, which is a non-trivial thing to establish an interval of convergence. But that's sort of a different question. But yeah, it's, you can basically use that like a two dollar whore in any math and it's all good.
Yeah. I mean, it's something that's true, like Pythagorean theorem showed like, you know, thirty different proofs of it. There's multiple different ways of demonstrating it, you know, say that it's true because it works and that you haven't found a case where it doesn't work and you just try plugging in values and you see that it holds, you just
Well, whether it's true depends on whether, you know, the McLaurin series is true. And it's true from the perspective of epsilon delta. That's why I brought that up before. Which is just as true as any limit function, because I think you can derive calculus from epsilon delta. But don't quote me on that. It's been a while since I've looked over that stuff.
All right. Too, too philosophical into what is, what is proof, what is true? But just saying these are the type proofs or equivalents that, you know, like I saw this in think calculus three and, you know, multiple times, you know, professors even earlier, maybe even high school. People had put this, you know, just to show it or there's hundreds of videos on YouTube. And I have another proof here, I think also on, on this. And, you know, so here just plugging in pi, that, you know, saying if, if you E to the I pi equaling negative one, which because cosine of pi is negative one and sine of pi is zero. And then E to the I pi is also negative one. And and then you're even looking at the geometric and then say, why is E to the I pi negative one? But saying is linking the five most important constants in mathematics. Zero, the additive identity, you add it to any number, it leaves the number unchanged. One is the multiplicative identity, multiply ten, one times any number leaves number unchanged. E is exponential function, which you redefined before in the base of natural logarithms. And also the integral derivative identity that E to the X is its own integral or derivative, the integral of E to the X is E to the X. The derivative of E to the X is E to the X. And then pi, the ratio of the circle circumference to its diameter. And I, the square root of negative one, Richard Feynman, credible famous physicists claim this was the jewel of mathematics. Some have written that because of the innate beauty and simplicity of this equation, that Euler used it as proof that God must exist. And people who call this God's equation probably haven't actually read Euler and Leibniz, because that was my point about dualism. Is that Leibniz was a monist, but you know, largely from, you could understand him classically as a dualist or Euler as a dualist. That the equation wasn't God's equation. The equations were meant to show the correspondence of so to say the spiritual and physical realms or mind and matter, that that was more what
Like a divine simplicity type of ordering principle thing?
Well, they're saying that the, like I showed on week in review in my, my diagram, that the mathematics is a higher order rule that coordinates the spiritual and physical realms. So that calculus and integrals and derivatives were from the mind of Euler and Leibniz meant to show how the spiritual and physical realms coordinate with each other, like Ben Watkins would talk about the interaction problem. That, you know, how does the soul interact with the body? And so Leibniz and Euler thought that calculus was the answer to the interaction problem and how the spiritual and material realms interact, interact. So Feynman or modern day people And how the spiritual and material realms interact, uh, interact, so Feynman or modern day people, oh, you know, look how these things all correspond. There must be a God who created the universe. That wasn't what they meant by the God equation. They meant that they were, that they were hoping when they developed these equations, that these equations would accurately describe the workings of the physical and material realms. And here you have, um, and, and so I mean, these days, like we read about Euler and Leibniz, anybody who studied mathematics knows the names, but very few people actually read Euler and Leibniz. More people read Newton because Newton's more relevant today in physics. Uh, like Principica is much more read than, than Leibniz, but, uh, you know, Euler and, uh, and, uh, Leibniz were more what we'd call mystics than engineers, like, uh, you know, Newton is more relevant today to modern academia, because he was more an engineer, although he was also a mystic. Anyone who's actually read Newton's literature, that even, uh, Euler and Leibniz's actual work on calculus is more mystical than engineering. Here we have a bunch of identities and, uh, you know, so the relationship of, uh, different identities. So, uh, maybe this one had another proof, like you could use a hyperbolic function, or I think you could prove, or if you use the word prove, um, Euler, Euler's, uh, formula, um, without Taylor series. So, uh,
I was just thinking of sketching it out. I mean, this probably won't work because my intuitions on these things are usually terrible, but I was thinking derive i from the eigenvectors of a rotation matrix with particularly selected values. Somehow might do it, but that may end up with a quote, truth, aka too many variables.
But you were probably actually taught that in school, like you may not remember, uh, but you know, so say a proof without Taylor series, you probably in class, your professor probably showed you, probably, um, looked, looked it up. So, you know, just looking online, there's hundreds of these videos. You could see this one's got over a hundred thousand views of, uh, a proof, uh, without Taylor series. And then you have like, you know, like, uh, you know, set of a formal, let, um, let f of phi equal e to the i phi times cosine theta i time, then take, uh, the derivative, then permutate it a few times. And, uh, so I, I didn't prepare this. Um, I, I'm sure Jennifer has seen these proofs before and there's actually more than one. You could look online and said, there's multiple proofs of-
That proof looked like it was going in an extremely weird direction.
But I said, there, there's hundreds of these online and it says, you know, one usually known as the most famous, uh, formula in um, calculus. And so you can, we've had low viewership, a low quality stream. Um, you for this, it's, I, it's, I guess more for me and Jennifer get on the same page and stuff. More to come for us to, uh, you know, get more used to talking, uh, in technically correct mathematical, um, terminology.
I took a picture and rendered it into hyperbolic geometry. I don't know if you can see it, but it's very small.
You're not sharing it? Are you saying that's your profile picture?
Yeah, my profile. I can show another one. I found an awesome website. I can share it. We can generate hyperbolic. I'm just really cute.
Okay. So I had two more things I wanted to cover and I probably this is kind of like a low quality stream, get low viewership. But, uh, you know, hopefully it's going to be a sign of more to come and hopefully get week in review more back on track and more, you know, academically rigorous. So another concept is, um, I, I guess paramet- parametrization and mapping. And, uh, here's the concept of having an object and mapping it to another and, uh, so it's, there's a lot of slides here. There are just a few of them were useful for wanting to show. So I guess you have isometric mapping that preserves length. Conformal mapping, um, preserves angles and you have equal real, um, preserving area. And so, you know, you think of maps generally and how you, if you have a spherical map and you want to map it onto two dimensions, that you, you're going to lose some of the information. Um, and how you choose to map it, uh, you know, if you want to preserve, so to say the angles or if you want to preserve the lengths, uh, it will come out in a different way and, uh, mathematical, uh, method of, uh, of analysis and topology in, in, uh, um, there's mathematical methods that are used to map and convert one equation to another in the same way that you could convert and not lose any information, convert between the different coordinate systems. Cause the different coordinate systems are really the, just different ways of saying the same thing. And I showed earlier the conversion factors of converting, uh, different, uh, something to different, uh, one coordinate system to the other and converting from the x, y plane, x, x, y, z to, uh, spherical coordinates where we had where, uh, you know, x equaling, uh, rho times sine, sine phi, cosine phi, or I have to check, uh, if, uh, you know, that's some of the purpose of the stream to refresh our memories. So, um, one of these famous mathing ma- methods is the Cauchy-Riemann, um, surfaces. And, uh, so it's, it's mathematical and it's based on, uh, you're somewhat like a parametrization where you have a u v and, uh, you, you define an equation in term of a different set of equations. A lot of times they use u and v for this and, and then sometimes u and v will equal-
You're talking about integration by parts? Cause you've lost me a bit with your-
Well, the Cauchy-Riemann involves integration by part, but it's a mapping method.
Okay.
The purpose of it is to map x, y to a u v plane.
Okay. Gotcha.
And, and then in the Cauchy-Riemann method of, of mapping, uh, relates the partial derivative of u uh, of, of, you, you could see the relation here and I didn't prepare to go in depth, in depth on it. And I just give some of the definitions. You have a harmonic map. Um, and, and there's a whole bunch of, uh, different theories on different ways to, uh, to map. And there's metric map, mapping, and it's just really if you're defining an equation, so you say an equation is a shape. So any equation, you could say really an equation is a geometric shape if you plotted it out. And then you could take that plot and say, there's a different method to get the shape. And, uh, you know, so this is somewhat called a mapping and it's really one of the most complex things that exists in all of, uh, um, mathematics. And, uh, you know, the pinnacle, which I wanted to at least mention tonight is the Riemann sphere, which is, uh, an extended complex plane that, uh, is a method really for creating any shape based on a sphere in a complex plane, but has a infinity and, uh, and so you, you have what's called the stereographic projection. Does that sound familiar to you?
Yes, it does. It's when you take a sphere and a line through the bottom of the sphere, through the top of the middle, and then for every point on the sphere, you extend that to the plane at the bottom of the sphere. So that map is, uh, one to one for all but one point. And did you want to guess which point that was?
Um, well, the apex, the, the top-
Exactly. Cause we can't isolate a point on, it's essentially infinity on your, uh, x, y.
Yeah. And so it's, it's, um, a possible way of mapping. So you could say any two dimension, any, any thing on the two dimensional plane could be seen as just a series, they would talk about parametrization in time, but, uh, just a series of lines being projected off of a sphere. And so it's a different way of defining a shape. So if you had like, you know, like a two dimensional shape and you could define it.
Are you thinking of unfolding as, uh, S two into, uh, R two? That's the way to think of this projection. So, uh, you're starting with S two and you're ending with R two and all but your apex are basically one to one. And why is this important? Well, because i is intimately connected with rotation and what's important about rotation? Well, measurement limit, there's only three independent rotations for the same reason. There's only three independent directions. Back to you, Dubit.
Yeah. So in complex, like, uh, higher level math, like it's, you say, it's, you know, these complicated notations and just pages of equations. And these equations could represent shapes and they could be transferred from one to the other. And, uh, like when you're talking about simple calculus and trying to find areas of shapes or define shapes, you have to choose the best coordinate system to work with it in. And, uh, that coordinate system, um, it could be cylindrical, spherical or Cartesian. And, uh, and, and then you might convert it from one to the other to do certain permutations. If you could have the same equation and you want to do something with it, you're going to convert it to polar coordinates. And then you might convert it back to Cartesian for other calculations. That the same could be applied in more complex ways than that. And, and then you could even consider this like non-Euclidean geometries. And then you could have non-Euclidean geometries that define Euclidean geometries. And here's another famous one-
You, you use this one, you just replace the parallel lines axiom with the hyperbolic axiom or the hyperbolic equivalent.
Yeah. So here we have, uh, a Mobius.
Do you know what I'm talking about? The, uh, hyperbolic equivalent, or where are we going to get to that later?
Um, well, I'm near the end of the basic things I wanted to cover. And so, you know, this was kind of, uh, in fact, that's all of, uh, all of my slides, all of my, all the stuff I prepared. So, uh, you know, it says we can't have a comprehensive review. We're not going to do in two hours. Uh, you know, math, uh, cover, uh, you know, year, what takes years in university, but, uh, it's one to, uh, put in line, um, you know, one thing that, you know, hopefully we can review or talk, that we'll talk about. What do the people who came up with these theories believe? And especially when we talk about dualism and spiritual subjects and trying to talk about spiritual subjects in mathematical terms. And, uh, and actually maybe, you know, I'll be on my channel, looking at some of the texts of, uh, you know, we can review, been talking a lot about Leibniz. Uh, but, uh, if you know, from that, that's more of the direction I'm moving in. And, and also for multiple truth hypothesis. For physics, if you want to talk about, uh, the holographic universe or multiple truth hypothesis. Then the, the question of what is reality, what is truth? And then you look, well, mathematics isn't necessarily so clear that, uh, you say, okay, what is a sphere? Is a sphere the physical object or is the sphere the equation for the sphere? And then you say that there's multiple different ways to, uh, describe the sphere. And, uh, you know, may, maybe they're all could be, uh, um, permutation, they all could be, uh, equivalent to each other. Uh, but, uh, you, so that's part of the direction, my angle in developing this. And also you're just moving forward to, you know, be sharper and be able to connect it to more real world, uh, applications. I think next week or two weeks from now might be the automotive testing expo. Um, I might go in real life, uh, to the expo, you know, talking to engineers about automotive equipment and stuff like this. Um, like, you know, like Elon Musk, uh, sending, uh, you know, spaceship, William Shatner went to space today. And, uh, you know, so just being able to show quick calculations, uh, for real world applications, engineering applications, computer applications, information theory. And then also spiritual topics and then also ontological, epistemological, uh, ideas to put them in more mathematical form. And, uh, you know, cause we've been talking about monism for so long. And, uh, you know, the Platonic, uh, uh, Platonism where, where Plato, you know, largely looks at the sphere as the origin of the material realm and the solids as the origins of, uh, earth, uh, air, fire, water and ether, and those are all permutations of the sphere. And, uh, you know, even the hyperbolic figure eight, and, uh, maybe, you know, we'll look more into Thad Roberts', uh, research and possibly how these, uh, um, constants of the physical world could be derived from a circle, you know, from the hyperbolic figure eight, which is kind of like the collapse of a circle. And, uh, you know, so it's interesting. So I wanted to start with the, you know, the unit circle and the sphere and give, you know, little preview on, uh, you know, some of the stuff that hopefully, you know, I'm reading and studying this stuff constantly. And hopefully, uh, you know, me and Jennifer will be able to, uh, you know, sharpen up so that we could speak about this stuff in correct terminology. Uh, you know, know the names better offhand, you know, through chunking, uh, repetition, study, review. And, uh, and then even be more mathematical where we could express our ideas and, you know, whip out a whiteboard. And, uh, you have some diagrams and equations that, uh, make sense to, uh, you know, even people that may not agree with our, uh, metaphysics or, or what we're trying to say, but, uh, it could at least, uh, yes, that was kind of my idea for the stream. I thought we can review was maybe getting a little off of what I wanted because, uh, um, you know, it's kind of like debate and personalities and, 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 uh, you know, so I wanted to get more back to the research and more grounded in something that is, uh, you know, someone could recognize someone has education, someone who's studied, someone who's, uh, you know, sort of say the accepted wise men of the Western tradition, the terminology that, that, uh, they use that, uh, could, uh, somewhat bring it back. Uh, you know, to, to, uh, to that.
Okay, cool. Well said. Yeah. My final bit would be just to say that like, uh, we're, we're undertaking quite a, as Jangle Stick says, hefty topic. So I appreciate everything we can do that will center our intention towards the gigantic, uh, task ahead of us. But I think we can proceed forward and framing it as for all arguments, there exist axioms for all, which I've said before, like for all information, positive assertions. It's more general. There's axioms for that too, right? Like even very basic language axiom. All right. So what we want to do is look for what those, uh, axioms or presuppositions are. Some of them are less, you, not just the presuppositions, but the, the deciding factor presupposition in the argument. Not all axioms have the same, uh, uh, degree. Not all axioms can deduce the same degree of, of information or specifically, uh, desirable information. Math gives you one example. Or actually now we, we probably have maybe two examples now with Thad's thing where you can implement axioms to excise particular information, domain specific information. And what could we argue to be like completely sort of, I don't want to say perpendicular way, but for all intents and purposes, perpendicular in, in some sense. Perpendicular in the sense of one might think of alternative universe, what is it multiverse? Uh, you know, at all. Ultimately, we want to deduce a priori, get practice deducing things a priori from axioms and then sort of hone in on the axioms that are few axioms as possible to basically deduce everything. And then return to the necessity of coherent metaphysics. Certain things you can't prove, but you can demonstrate them, which is a proof of concept, because in some sense they, they require like not an infinite number of data, but access to an infinity. So
Yeah, for communication theory.
But we can demonstrate their validity and it's important to see through experience. Sorry. I just want to finish real quickly. Why these things are important? So how axioms frame questions not self-evident? And it could be a lot more powerful way to make arguments. And a math would be a stepping stone towards that, but not in and of itself, because the axioms of math versus the way to structure arguments to win them IRL, like the ones IRL would be structured based on laws of physics, not the laws of math, which is an intermediary, but it nevertheless necess- necessary intermediary. In a lot of cases, just to build up those basic skills required for more complex things like debate. Thanks for listening. Just to sort of put upon what you said earlier, so in my head, it all ties together to being relevant, but it Dubit doesn't see how it's all relating to essentially the same thing. So there's always, you know, I do think we're doing quite well, even though we've had some flubs, just, just to say- I do think we're doing quite well, even though we've had some flubs, just, just to say like overall.
Well, I said for communication theory, to be able to express things in the way that people are most likely to know it and say, okay, you might have your problems, uh, you know, we have our problems with, uh, the way things are presented in, you know, university or canonized. Uh, but to say that, uh, we're talking about ideas, most of what we're saying that people are familiar with and to put in the terminology that people are already familiar with large parts of these ideas. So a certain precision, a certain understanding of the lexicon. I was watching, you know, these mathematical videos I'll share on week in review of, you know, this, uh, this man, uh, trying to check his name, Wild Burger with, you know, his own, but, uh, you know, say, what is it? What is the lexicon that is used in the university system? And where does my ideas differ from the mainstream in order to express it? And then, uh, you know, I was just watching a video the other day about, uh, Ramchal, the Moishe Lazzado, who, who, uh, the famous book, Masilo Sashar, the path to the just. And the nature of people who talk about mystical ideas is people generally think it's like weak minded people that believe in spiritual stuff. And, uh, you know, so if people are talking about spiritual stuff, generally people think it's because they're dumb. And, uh, so, you know, to be able to work against that, uh, typical grain that is saying like, no, me and Jennifer have, uh, good educations from top schools. And understand, you know, like, uh, Joanne or something like, it's not that I don't, you don't understand evolution, why reject it? I understand evolution and I still reject it. I don't need you just explain to me the basic evolution in order to correct my understanding. Um, you know, I went to good schools. I understand what they taught me, uh, but I see it differently anyways. And, you know, Jennifer's, you know, more, I don't want to call it combative approach. You're just like, well, I'm right. Um, you know, saying that like a communication theory for what is the idea in my head or her head? And how are you?
To me, it's cruel to lie to people with a lower level of intelligence. But I'll work on being more diplomatic. I appreciate the feedback.
Yeah. And to say, cause I guess the text that I've read who said like, no, I mean, the assumption is the person with a spiritual idea is people are going to assume that me and Jennifer are the one with the lower level of intelligence. That, uh, you know, even if it's correct to say, actually it's me and Jennifer that are at the higher level intelligence. That the assumption is going to be the opposite. And then to express things in the terminology. So like, no, I went to good schools. I know what you're talking about. Uh, and it could express it in that terminology also. And so there is something else, a better understanding. And, uh, you know, this is what you were taught. Uh, this is the idea that, uh, you know, so that, that was one of the purpose of these streams. So rather just having these ideas in our heads that maybe no one else is going to understand. You know, communication theory to being able to express these ideas in, you know, say the way that it would be expressed in the academy, at least from, uh, you know, my perspective, uh, you know, Jennifer could, uh, do as she pleases, but it's been largely my, uh, you know, consistent advice that I'm called like the scientific method, but the basis of, uh, academic publication where you have to do historical review. And you have to basically go over what historically the great minds of previous generations thought about the idea and where our thoughts on the idea come into that. And even if you're talking about spiritual realms and, uh, you know, sort of say my mind, understanding things, because some sort of connection, uh, between, uh, a divine realm. Uh, that, uh, would largely be rejected in the academic realm, but at least being able to describe it in the terms. And even be able to show that that is actually how, uh, you know, the fathers of the West, so to say, the fathers of, uh, of modern, uh, uh, Western society themselves defined it. And, uh, you know, so going to.
I mean, who can argue against a quantum periodic table?
Well, I think people just aren't listening or not going to care whether, whether you might have an idea, you might be correct. Uh, but, uh, you know, whether people are going to understand the idea that's in your head. And, and then say, if you want to spread your idea, it's upon you to, uh, express the idea in a way that other people are, um, going to understand. And you could use possibly examples like, uh, Tesla or something that maybe he had correct understandings, but wasn't correct. It wasn't able to convey it to other people in a way. And then there was other people who developed the ideas and maybe a hundred years later is like, no, Tesla actually understood that idea, uh, back then correctly. He just, uh, you didn't have the personality to, uh, explain to anybody else. And, uh, or, you know, ver- various things. So that's at least, uh, my angle on it, my approach and why, why I wanted to do the stream. And I don't want to waste a bunch of time arguing with Jennifer and saying like, uh, whether she has an idea and it's correct in her head. You say whether, whether, uh, I, I wouldn't expect anyone to have faith in her and, and say that, uh, that that's true. Maybe it is true. You're saying work before I think she has ideas, maybe they're correct. But to have faith that, uh, that the idea in her head is correct, uh, that, that, no, it's upon her to express it in a way that other people understand.
You could be agnostic and that doesn't preclude you from using things that I've used.
Agnostic on about, I would say that, no, and your average person will lean towards no.
Yourself though. Not, not the average person cannot judge the truth value of what I'm saying. We both know that.
Well, I said, not to say that their value, uh, means something, but so like, uh, I mean, as I mentioned, Masilo Sashar, that, uh, that at least from the sages, I learned, they're sorry, that, that not even the average person, the majority of people, even the sages are going to lean towards no, are going to lean towards saying this person's probably dumb, not smart. And, uh, you know, so the, the assumption is that, you know, Jennifer might be right. Uh, but, uh, no one's going to care. No one's going to go to the effort of trying to show that she's right. She's the one who's going to have to go through that effort. And, uh, you know, that's the price of trying to share these ideas. And, uh, and, you know, that's my understanding of how things work and.
Well, I mean, if God's a solipsist, wouldn't it just be faster to ascend to divine personhood? And then just take over what everybody thinks. Since they're just fragments of God mind, right? I mean, if that's true, that'd be the fastest way, wouldn't it?
Right. Because you're talking about theoretical ontologies that most people don't.
Logic.
So you, I mean, you go back into dualism and the nature of the material realm and the nature of God and say, most people are going to have generally a materialist understanding. And, uh, and they're not even gonna, you know, I mean, even, most people are not even gonna, uh, you know, so that your average person, if someone has spiritual ideas just assumes they're fraud, they're crack, the assumption is they're dumb, not smart. And, uh, and, you know, so you could have your own understanding of how things operate and work. Or, you know, say like, one day we'll die, death will set us free and the truth will be revealed. And, and we'll know the answer. Uh, but till then the assumption is, uh, that this is how the material realm operates. And, uh, you know, saying like, you know, just like any belief system that, uh, you know, one day you'll die. And if you believed in this deity or that deity, or this principle or that principle, you'll be rewarded or punished accordingly. And, uh, in, in that you'll be generally put in, uh, you know, that type of, uh, of system that, uh, like whatever you're talking about, I don't know. Um, you know, may, maybe I'm dumb and I don't understand, maybe you're dumb.
Understand any of it? Understand any of it? Even just a tiny little, tiny little thread?
Well, I'm talking more the generic, uh, outlook on expressing in communication theory.
Ah, I see.
So I was saying, you know, whether you're right or wrong, you know, just like saying whether, you know, when I die, I'm going to heaven or hell, or there is a heaven or hell. Uh, you know, so when I die, I'll find out. And, uh, but, you know, till then, you're saying, most people, you've said, they don't believe in heaven or hell. They don't think anything like that, you know, so, so it's like, that, that, you know, that's why I use the expression, your death will set me free. And, uh, you, because really you're not, that, uh, at least most of the sages, kabbalistic sages, different, uh, you're saying that, uh, that, uh, as long as the soul is trapped in the body or from a scientific, the problem of empiricism, the problem of knowledge, uh, that we can't really know the answers to these questions. So, you know, maybe death will set us free one day and we'll know the answers to these questions. But till that point, uh, you know, it's largely shrouded in uncertainty. And most people, so in case of uncertainty sway towards no. Uh, and, and, uh, you know, I've talked about my chunking theory on how people understand truth. And, uh, you have to build truth off of things that you already understand. And if a system is not built upon the principles that a person is already familiar with, then you have a cognitive dissonance that the person has to leave their system. So to say, even if you're right, that, uh, you're from my understanding of cognitive dissonance, it doesn't matter. Uh, that, uh, um, a person can't just accept the truth. They have to build the truth off of their axioms. And if their axioms are false, that there has to be some method to relieve the false axioms and still true axioms. And in some cases that could be impossible. And so, okay, death will set me free of my false axioms. Uh, but the dissonance, uh, at the point, it's like, no, my, my ingrained false axioms, that there is no way to see the truth. And, uh, you even from a kabbalistic ontology, that's the nature of the material realm. That, uh, taking material form in and of itself prevents us from understanding the truth. And only death will set us free of the material body and enable us to, uh, see the truth. Um, but I mean, that's the basic kabbalistic Judaic understanding that I was trained and understand these things. And I was talking, talking about, you know, violence a lot and the human nature of, uh, cognitive dissonance and, uh, you know, saying that, uh, you can't like, like the Jesus principle. You say like, no, this is the truth. And I'm going to tell the people the truth and they're going to recognize that what I told them is the truth. But they're going to crucify me for doing it. They're not going to reward me because it's the nature of cognitive dissonance. And to have the people, you know, so to say relieved of their false axioms. It's very complicated.
Well, this is exactly why the knowledge is traditionally kept secret to some degree to protect the bearer of the knowledge from the negative repercussions of the cognitive distance, right? Like it's not really a defense to be like, well, I told you the truth. Ha, it's like, no, you know more. It's up to you to strategically let that truth out based on principles. It's not the truth in and of itself is not a principle. Cause people get so antagonized and upset. Yeah. To some extent, not meant to be revealed. Yeah.
That's what like, uh, you know, the, the Hebrew text that righteous people look forward to their death. If there's a battle in the material realm between evil and good, that evil, you know, so to say, has the home court advantage. So, so to say, the truth is not meant for the material realm. The truth is limited by the material realm. And, uh, it's kind of what I mentioned at the beginning of the nature, the connection between algebra and geometry. So we say algebra is the truth and geometry is an illusion, so to say, saying that, uh, you know, there, there is some sort of metaphysical truth. Um, and the physical representation of the truth, like a platonic cave is the illusion. And it's an inaccurate, uh, uh, manifestation. And there is no way to correctly manifest truth in the material realm. And, uh, you know, so that hardcore axiom of possibly the Jesus principle, uh, you know, duties of the heart that I went over on my channel. And kind of these hardcore religious dualistic principles to say, okay, righteous people look forward to the death. Uh, because there is no truth in the material realm. And, uh, you know, so say that even if you had access to the truth, there is no way to share it. And even from like, uh, messianic possibly, you know, like the Kabbalists say, in the end, the material, you know, we're, we're going to revert to the spiritual realm. Because ultimately the truth is in opposition to, uh, material form. And, uh, and even looking at mathematics could be indicative of this. And you say like the great minds like Plato, uh, Leibniz, uh, Euler looked at mathematics and calculus and even Newton in this form. Uh, you know, Newton, a lifelong celibate, didn't have any children. And, uh, a lot of, you know, these guys were mostly Christian in the period in the West. Uh, but, uh, you saw, uh, a disconnect to the material realm and thought about these things in esoteric terms and had to disconnect from the material form just to think about these ideas. And, uh, really that's abstract thought. And we're talking about the, you know, the general platonic, uh, proof for the spiritual realm, that ideas don't exist in the material realm. They exist in the spiritual realm. Cause if you want to think about abstract thought, you have to disconnect yourself from the body and the senses, because, uh, uh, the senses, uh, are, are limiting. So, uh, I'm not sure if you had any thoughts on that. I mentioned at the beginning, you know, what, uh, that you could, it's not necessarily some of the great minds of the Western tradition did say straight up that basically, um, as a mapping, algebra corresponding to the spiritual realm and geometry to the physical realm, uh, but sometimes just intuitive. And you say, really geometry is also part of the spirit. Algebra and geometry are actually both part of the spiritual realm. And, uh, in these things I wanted to express on, uh, on week in review and the nature of, uh, abstract thought.
I'm not sure exactly which part of that you want me to address.
So Janglestick is saying, you know, Dubit's talking about connecting mathematics to spiritual matters. I was saying, no, mathematics is a spiritual matter. So connecting mathematics to material matters, because mathematics is by definition a spiritual science. And that's why I said, when you talk about X and Ys and abstract thoughts, you're already in the spiritual realm. And so if your ontology, you don't recognize a spiritual realm, or you don't know how to correctly differentiate between mind and matter, that you think that mathematics is an element of the material realm. And I'm using mathematics to talk about spiritual matters. And I'm saying definitionally, uh, it's the opposite. And that's the point I'm trying to express. And, uh, and, and I'm trying to bring the proof of these very names of the people who came up with the very ideas that led us to be atheists today. Um, defined it this ways, that, uh, you know, today we use mathematics and science largely in atheistic, materialistic world, because mathematics and science so correctly define the material realm, that people think that mathematics and science is a, a material wisdom, when the very people who came up with these wisdoms said it was the opposite.
So they're following the edicts of this mathy religion of evolution or something along those lines.
Well, and that's, we go back to chunking theory. People are just trying to understand the world we live in the best of their ability by recognizing patterns. And people don't understand themselves, like Socrates, know thyself. Uh, that people, uh, you know, the material realm is very accurate. So you say, there is this. And if I say the me is not this body, um, you would say, well, all I see is this body. You know, what are you talking about? This guy's a madman. But, uh, you know, the fundamental understanding of, uh, you know, of the ancients of the developers of math and calculus was that, uh, you know, the me, the Socrates, the Plato, the Leibniz, the Descartes, you know, so on and so on. Uh, today weren't their bodies and their bodies are now long gone. The carbon cycle, if they were buried, uh, you know, has, uh, returned to elements that made up their body and recycled into the earth. But their ideas still live on and say, because they weren't their body, their essential them uh, was, was never their body and saying the essential me that is now in this body isn't actually, uh, this body. And, and it's a fundamental, really, you know, like in, in the US, you only see like Hindus or Hare Krishnas. Really that would say that straight up expression. Um, you know, the Hare Krishnas are, are really the only people I ever hear talk like that and say, I'm not my body. Um, but most Hindus or Hasidic Jews, um, people who've studied the Jewish mysticism, uh, or even Christians would accept the basic premise that I am not my body. I am something that controls, uh, and, and has the sense perception of my body, but the essential I that is thinking and talking with you right now is not the body. The body is just being used to communicate whatever the essential me is in, uh, the material realm. And the essential you that, uh, you know, hears these sound waves and transforms that into, uh, intelligible ideas is not your body either. So I, I mean, most, you know, I've done a lot of interfaith and, and basically everyone from most spiritual traditions that believe in a soul. Uh, you know, by definition, if I, I just talked with Ben Watkins today, so whatever reason, we didn't have our debate last week. Uh, but if it comes on, uh, next week about the nature of a soul will be, um, you know, that, no, that I am not my body. And even if, you know, Ben Watkins is a materialist or T-Jump is an atheist and says, I am my body. I am a product of my brain. Say he's just making a fundamental mistake. And even though he perceives himself to be his body in, in, uh, the, uh, you know, T-Jump that you spoke to as a product of his body, that he is incorrect. And the T-Jump you spoke to was not in fact his body and was in fact his soul and, uh, you know, will survive his death and so on and so on. But whatever reason, the element of him that put these patterns together and incorrectly perceive these patterns in an incorrect way. And, uh, and then, you know, the cognitive dissonance of a person who says a, a. And, and then, you know, the cognitive dissonance of a person who has a lifetime of incorrect perceptions, you know, which is somewhat related to the expression, death will set us free, which because of all these incorrect perceptions that I've had since my birth till today, that I'm beyond repair, that truth is so distant from me that I have perceived reality in such an incorrect way that only death will allow the, the I that is not my body to be able to perceive reality correctly. Because the dissonance of the true nature of reality versus the decades that I've incorrectly perceived reality would basically, you know, be so much dissonance, it would kill, it would kill me.
Not gonna laugh, because it's not funny, because that was an important revelation. I think everybody fears that. That's just your ego trying to hold you back to the regular round of control. Ego, control, inertia.
I spent years struggling with this equation, you know, because it says straight up in Jewish texts, righteous people look forward to our deaths. So I said, okay, the laughter, I'm not going to laugh because I, because I trusted the sages. And I saw that that's what the sages said. And even though, you know, like, what the hell, I'm not, I'm not going to become a suicide bomber. I'm not, I'm not, there's nothing, you know, psychologically wrong with me, but I trusted the sages. And I saw that's what the sages said. And I accepted that the sages were correct, even though I couldn't understand why the sages were correct, because everything I understood told me that, that, you know, that's psychotic. But as I've investigated the topics deeper, it makes sense to me. And then even to be able to describe it in some sort of understandable terminology based on chunking theory and cognitive dissonance and just saying, because, you know, lower high birth. Because when I, when I was born, I was not revealed the truth. I was revealed, and, you know, I was taught false ideas. And I had to figure things out for myself. And most of the things I tried to figure out for myself, I was incorrect about. I put together patterns incorrectly. And at this point, as a grown man, so many of these misconceptions that I was taught and tried to figure out for myself have become ingrained in me, that it has became my essential identity. And so, you know, the duvid, the, you know, the David Kelton that has the genetics of my father and mother and the experiences that from birth till today, that will be the, you know, the David Kelton who, when I die, returns into the ground and will be a memory of the soul that was in this body, in this material form, is just one permutation of my true identity that will survive death. And my true identity that so to say, will be set free by death. And then my true identity that looks forward to leaving this form. And not in any negative way, not in any disrespect to my parents, not any disrespect to my teachers. And not even, you know, some sort of karmatic way that, and I can't blame myself as a kid for misunderstanding reality and making mistakes. Because I just did the best with the information, you know, that I knew. And then, you know, following the sages to try to understand why God made the world in, in this way. And then recognizing, say, the statement that all people, you know, what the Talmud says, you know, at death, at least from a Judeo biblical conception, will stand judgment before our creator for all of our actions, thoughts, actions, speech, from the time our soul entered our body till it leaves our, our body, that every person gives the same excuse. And, you know, the language in the Talmud, that we were, you know, listening to the Yitzhak R. Evil Urge, or the, you know, language that I use, is just struggling with the harsh conditions of the material realm. So why did I have all these false perceptions? Because I was just dealing with the harsh conditions of the material realm. In reality, everybody, and I mentioned on week in review, like the Heisenberg's uncertainty principle for karma, from a certain perspective, if you looked at any given person, knowing the preconditions of their karma, they probably made the most logical, reasonable decision at that time. Even God forbid, people who do horrible things, based on their previous karma. But just like the Heisenberg uncertainty principle, you could never know the totality of a person's karma and their current situation in, in time and space. That's okay, that my soul entered my body and exists in a certain time and place and, you know, lineage and so on and so on. And that all of that pieces of information are unknowable. But in karmatic theory, so to say, we don't have free will. Given all that information, we don't actually have free will. And we did the decision that, given our previous state of karma, was the determinative decision that we would have made based on the state of karma going into that decision. But it's impossible to know that state of karma that we're in, that causes us to be, to make those actions. I mentioned that. And, and actually mathematics and Leibniz and the calculus was actually, from my belief and understanding, was more meant to define the spiritual science than the material science. And it just turned out to be that calculus, the same calculus that, you know, so to say, mystics and theologians developed to try to help explain the nature of the connection between the soul and the body, the spiritual material realms, also correctly defines material phenomenon, that these same exact formulas are useful for engineering and, you know, electronics and all these other aspects that make the gadgets and devices that, you know, that we all use today.
Yeah, just come back to what we were talking about before, like, about Ben Watkins. If you're not defining whether true is predominantly a matter of imminence or permanence, those are incompatible in some sense. If that's not defined at the outset, your conversation is probably not going to ever land anywhere meaningful. And between the body, I am body versus I am mind, there's another thing, which is just the pure animating principle of it. So there's like three different entities, body, consciousness, and then animating principle. So then which one, if you're one of those three, well, which one are you, right? So the question is pretty complicated. But yeah, this has been a great show. Definitely think we reframe things in a more comprehensive way.
Even to put it on, you know, to put me and Jennifer on the same page that we could move forward with our research and then try to be intelligible sounding to other people and, and even recognize, you know, kind of like a harsh reality, like, you know, my father, you know, maybe, you know, like, you're saying, like, these people do not like you, they're not really your friends. You take your education seriously. And then saying that my dad wasn't trying to, you know, make me not have any friend. He just wanted me to take my education seriously. And from a religious perspective, you know, if you have children, you're trying to teach them right from wrong, in your nature of trying to teach them an ontology of, you know, saying, okay, you are the body. Take care of your body. Be careful what you do. But the essential you is not your body. And I'm also concerned about what's going to happen to your soul after you die. And you versus.
Just say the body is one of their possessions, that it's their most important possession. Because it's the home of their soul.
Well, you as a mother will have decided how you're going to raise your children, or you as a teacher, how you teach your students. But, you know, in terms of internet debate and discourse, then you're talking about, you know, in the open marketplace of ideas or arenas, trying to express these systems. And then also just saying like, you know, as a person who's been in the big, real, you know, dangerous world, that there's different people who see things differently in trying to express, you know, like multiple truth hypothesis or understanding of how different people see the world and how that might lead to different predictions. You know, so to say, if someone is predicting that there's a soul that will leave the body after death, and that's important in terms of what you should do, versus someone said, there is no soul and there is nothing that survives death. In, in terms of, you know, you could have parents that are atheists and parents that are theists. And they're going to raise their kids possibly different based on those axioms or assumptions. And if you're in the world dealing with different people of different assumptions, to have some sort of, you know, metaphysics or system to deal with that. And, you know, I've been doing interfaith for a long time. That's why I developed the multiple truth hypothesis. Because I wanted to take people serious in their beliefs. When people have belief systems and rituals, and you're like, oh, that's just dumb, that's just false. And you're giving the benefit of the doubt, maybe it's true. Maybe your ritual and belief system is an accurate description of some sort of connection between a spiritual realm and the material realm. And then working with these, you would appear to be conflicting systems or what may factually be conflicting systems. And even to hypothesize that if they are factually conflicting systems, that maybe they're not mutually exclusive. And then try to explain that. And then, you know, send the academic method where you have to look, you know, presumably, I'm not the first person who did interfaith or thought about these things. And probably the great minds of previous generations also tried to get people together who had different belief systems and ontologies. And in fact, they did. And, you know, so that's why I'm always talking about Plato and Leibniz and, you know, the sages and so on and so on.
Yeah, it's absolutely wonderful. I wish more people took religion as seriously as you do. Excuse me to chuckle, I got.
Because he's.
There is trolling in the chat. That's what I.
Yeah, I see the laughter is the dissonance, but saying like, wishing, or saying that the material reality, like, I don't wish, you know, like, I wish gravity just stopped, you know, saying that this is the material reality. And trying to understand, you know, God's greatness in that way. And in these complicated, you know, statements from the sages, like, you know, like, I submit and humble myself before God. And in some kind of wish for things to change in that realm. I'm going to submit, you know, it's like, avow myself to the system and recognize that the way I see things is likely inaccurate. And try to keep on resolving the, you know, accept the dissonance in order to have a higher understanding of truth. And do, you know, do public good, create good karma, help people improve their life in a way that makes sense. You know, be competitive, you know, so to say, that, except some of the statement of the sages, that evil has the home court advantage in the material realm. So if I'm on the side of good, that I'm going to lose most battles in the material realm, because that's the nature of how things work. As if you have a different ontology, you say, I'm on the side of good and I expect to win in the material realm. You could understand a system like that, but you're saying whatever sages you follow in the, those different ontologies. And, you know, like Squid Games, I actually, I, I, I didn't watch Squid Game, I'm not going to, I didn't watch.
I don't even know what that is, and it sounds disgusting. But yeah, it's, it's because Maya is the principal component of manifestation. And Maya basically means illusion. So there will always be an intrinsic confusion to any type of a quote empirical undertaking.
You could compare the matrix to Squid Game, but Squid Game is much more violent and, and dystopian, so to say. But say, why is that the most popular thing in the world? Because there's probably some sort of dystopian mapping that people have a natural intuition that the material realm is stacked against us, so to say, that, you know, so to say, bad has the home court advantage in the material realm. And that's also the bend towards dualism.
Wow, that is an amazing quote.
You're saying that good wins out because the soul survives death and because there's a spiritual realm. If it was just the material realm, you're saying evil having the home court advantage. So dystopian realities of the matrix or Squid Games make sense to the average person that, you know, saying that the material realm is stacked, the odds are, it's rigged against us. You're just saying that everybody knew that when we were born, that death, there's, you know, death and taxes, you can't escape. Or so on and so on. But you, that, this idea that mind, the I that is me, is not part of this physical realm. So even though the physical realm, we're talking about mathematics and mind. I think Jennifer made that meme, she just shared with, you know, I'd said on the chess server that the same mind that we use to observe the physical realm is the same mind that observes the spiritual realm. And if the person thinks that the material realm is the only thing that exists, they're mistaken, because the mind is actually part of the spiritual realm. And the mind factually does observe the spiritual realm, even if we don't realize it.
Spiritual realm animates the mind. The mind performs observations within itself. Like it's waveform reducing into itself. That's why there's a reduction in one area and an amplification elsewhere, because there's a conservation. Like always just bring it back to Heisenberg. Because it's, it eventually builds up from Heisenberg principle, right? Like, you got to bring it down to just a single slit. What's happening? Okay, the thing's 3D and then it's compressing. It's still technically 3D, but now it's a disk, it's not a sphere anymore. Okay, what's happening? It's going to one place, but we only care about the distribution. How does that relate to other things? Well, free will is actually superposition states, so it's not just one of them. It's the entire distribution times a bunch of other distributions together in one giant hole. So that's like the basic picture. It's just too complicated to really work with as one entity. So then it's just a series of strategic breakdowns, chunking, as you say. Best metaphors for it, basically. So I think math is as good a place as any, probably one of the better places to start. So I do appreciate Dubit being serious about this and look forward to the next one, whatever it entails.
Yeah, great. And I said, you know, I spent three year, almost three years in Israel. I never got tired of studying and talking about this stuff. You said, you know, my life went on. I went back to America, New York. I spent years studying and talking about this, anyone who knows me. So this is majority what I talk about or interested in. But, you know, we're in the material realm, we have to live, you know, Jennifer, we've been three years almost. And I don't think either one of us are tired about talking about these things. And so you hear more about it, but, you know, so as they want to make progress. And, you know, just like I left Israel after a while, because you had things to accomplish. And you have to learn and have to, you know, so I wanted to push myself and push Jennifer to be more serious about this. And, and, you know, I saw them reviewing the math, even if it was somewhat low quality content, that's not really going to be useful for someone to watch. It's like a math tutorial, but it's likely of things, you know, more to come. And, you know, hopefully, week in review will get more technical. I'm not sure if, you know, Jennifer is going to be making, I'm encouraging her to do more streams on her channel. And it'll probably be, you know, more math and more technical like that, and hope so. And then also the conversations and, you know, the communication theory that there's actually communication, actually real communication, ideas and understanding between people and, you know, what that means. So appreciate it. Thanks for coming on, Jennifer, as always. And look forward to week in review this Sunday. Charles wanted to postpone Thursday, so I think we're going to do our thing Friday at noon. I'd offered to bring Claire on, but there might be a scheduling conflict. So it should be Charles at noon. And if not, we'll reschedule to next week. And I might try to bring some guests on Charles for the next few weeks. And I thought I'd have Claire, just because she's been asking me for so long. And, you know, so we'll see about that. And, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to make week in review more, at least a segment of it where people could come on at least for a short amount of time, if they're not capable of these more productive, esoteric conversations, just to come on and maybe help book more future conversations and stream. So thanks a lot, Jennifer, and have a great week.
You too. See you soon.